Twenty twenty-three School Board of Directors meeting to order at five P M. We've got three directors present in the boardroom and one Maggie Ty Tucker on Zoom. With that, could I have a motion to establish the agenda as published?
Some move.
And second, please. All in favor, students?
Aye.
And directors?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's one, zero, and four, zero in favor of the agenda with that superintendent's report.
Great, thank you, President D'Souza. Good evening, Board. And I wanted to first acknowledge that Asha is not here because she is competing. Andrew, where is the competition? We know who's hosting it or where else. She made states her track. Her relay team, they were not expecting to do so, but her relay team qualified for state and track. And so that's why she's out this evening. Just a couple reminders coming up. Next week, we'll have our budget study session on Thursday in preparation for the first reading of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And then we'll need to start thinking about the twenty, the June twenty-second meeting. That's a combined regular board meeting. And then we have a study session to follow. I've been keeping some topics and some ideas along the way that I can put into the report coming up. But certainly send them to President D'Souza or myself if you have topics that you're thinking about. As we approach this weekend, I certainly want to, and I sent a message out to our entire staff today, that while it is a long weekend, and it's nice that we have tomorrow without schools in session because we didn't need that snow day. Monday is still an important day to remember why we have it off and that it's Memorial Day. And yes, it's the unofficial start to summer, as they say. Swimming pools open across the country, but we're here to also remember those who gave their lives for our country in service. So want to remind us of that. And then looking ahead to June, exciting month ahead of us. We have Pride Month coming up and we'll be recognizing and honoring our LGBTQ plus students and staff during Pride Month. We'll also celebrate Juneteenth for the first time as a school district. Monday, June nineteenth is a, will be a day where we don't have school. Our Black Student Union has, we've been working with the city and they'll be holding at Mercerdale Park a series of events that afternoon with food trucks and music and celebrations for Juneteenth. And then also it's Gun Violence Awareness Month in June. And we're promoting Aware Orange Day on Friday, June second. That's a week from tomorrow. Gun Violence Prevention Day is the third of June, but we'll celebrate it on the second. And I think as I, as I reflect on the work that community members in the PTA and others have done over the years. You know, we've been out and from of trying to really think about gun safety, gun awareness, but also prevention. And so look forward to also honoring that. And with that, I've got some, a great couple of recognitions that we'll come up with, but I'll hold those until later on in the meeting.
Okay, let us move on to two A. Board policy eighteen hundred OE ten instructional program.
Great. So I'm gonna bring, I think, Directors Prescott and Director Ronzer, if you want to come on up. OE ten is kind of the heart and soul of what we do. And this is always a great opportunity to come back and, yes, absolutely. Come on up. We always have a CCR report for you, and that's part of our annual compliance. But then this also affords us the opportunity to share with you, the board and the community, some of the other reviews that we've been doing. We won't speak to all of them, but we'll certainly take questions on all of them. But we did want to highlight a couple of them this evening. So I'll turn it over to Director Prescott to take it from there.
Great. And so some of the reviews that, well, like one of them specifically that we did this year was the math review. And we've been doing that for a number of years. We wrapped that up. And we now adopted new curriculum. And so we're not necessarily going to cover that, but happy to along the way answer any questions you might have about it. One of the other major reviews we did this year was our technology review. And so tonight we have Andrew here to walk us through the technology, the nine twelve technology review. And where we land that, I know he's been providing updates along the way, but he'll give kind of a full picture this evening and then turn it over to Jen McCullen to celebrate the many, many pages of highlights and accomplishments included in OE ten from courses in RCT and CCR.
All right. So, you know, as Jamie mentioned, it's just an overview of some of the technology projects that we've been working on over the course of this year. And then we will provide just a quick overview of some of the projects coming up for next year. Really, the big project coming up for the next year is our one-to-one laptop rollout at our high school in grades nine through twelve. Other things that we'll be doing this summer. One major thing about that, other thing that we'll be doing this summer is updating some of the infrastructure and the hydroelectric cabling within our high school. We'll talk a little bit more about that, continuing a network infrastructure refresh. And then looking at, as we bring in laptops to our high school, what impacts that have, that has across K-12, primarily in K-1 classrooms with, with classroom sets. Going back to our nine twelve laptop rollout, this is a process that's been in the works for several years. It started just before our, you know, COVID experience started. And in that process, really what we focused on was the instructional practices, really kind of reviewing how our, our students are being asked to utilize devices in their classroom, what services, what resources, what are the types of tasks that they're being asked to do as part of their instructional classes? And then really trying to identify some of those boundaries and barriers to access. And then from there, developing some desired features and then really looking at technology that's gonna best meet the needs for those students. So some of the things that you see around the list are the outcomes of that. Some of the things that we needed were, you know, larger screens. We definitely still wanted to maintain a touchscreen, full-size keyboard. A big thing was a full browser that supports Chrome extensions, continuing the ability to use Stylite. Through COVID, we really saw the use of Stylite in math with ClassPick and across multiple of our classrooms really explode. So, you know, the ability to use Stylite for there. Other things that were really important for us were durability as students transport them and utilize them for, for four years. The ability to continue to have classroom management and giving teachers control and lesson delivery mechanisms. Ease of use was a big thing. As we went through this process, we really tried to look at equity and an equitable lens. And, you know, right now with our BYOD program, our students might have a very drastic, different experience depending on whether or not they're using the school device or whether or not they brought in their own curriculum device. Many of our students utilize both. But we wanted to make sure that that ease of use and that experience was going to be similar across all of our students. Again, just looking at ways to remove barriers to access. Again, manageability on our end was a key piece just in terms of deployment and the management process. This is just a review of the devices that we brought in to our pilot. We did have a pilot process that included staff, students. We had some open houses. We brought it to our technology advisory group and which includes community members. There was a number of devices that included both Chromebooks, iPad Airs and iPad Pros, Apple MacBooks, different types of Windows eleven laptops, including Microsoft Surfaces. And the device that we landed on was our Lenovo thirteen W Yoga. I think I brought a couple of those here to one of our previous meetings for you to be able to see. But we've been really thrilled with the, the device that we selected. I think it gives us a lot of flexibility. And as we look at implementing these in our, our classrooms, I think it's gonna be it's gonna be really awesome just watching how our teachers and our students are gonna be able to utilize these devices across our, our classrooms. Couple of upcoming dates of interest now that we're starting to get into summer is we have received the laptops and we're refining our deployment processes. And some of the restrictions is to make sure that they're, they're ready for deployment. Something that's gonna be new this year, we have not deployed fourteen hundred laptops to our, our students. That's a big endeavor. And so one thing that we're looking at doing is starting the early distribution in July. So there's gonna be an email going out to our eighth through twelfth grade families after we send it to our high school staff to review to make sure that, that they're all on board and they have seen it first. But we'll be sending a message to our families. At the end of the year, our students are gonna keep their iPads. We will collect senior iPads. Those will get moved to surplus. But our students are gonna keep their iPads at the end of the year. There's not gonna be a renewal process. So after they're done with their finals, they're just gonna, you know, end the school year and take them with them. But we have identified six states throughout the month of July and August. I didn't include it in the spreadsheet because we finalized it after this presentation we said, yeah, but it's July twelfth, July nineteenth, July twenty-fourth, August second, August eighth, August sixteenth. And six states and opportunities, we, we have an RSVP form that families can then preserve a, a spot. And the hope is, is, you know, if our families are available on one of those six states, it'll be about a twenty-minute process for them to come here in our boardroom. They're gonna bring their student iPad with them. We'll check it in at that point. And in about twenty minutes, we'll provide them with their, their student laptop and they'll be ready to go. If our families are not available on any of those dates because they're, they're off on vacation, it is, you know, our summer at that point, then there's still that opportunity for fees and photos, which is on August twenty-second and August twenty-third for them to come in. But I do wanna make a plug. You'll hear about this later. The iPads that are currently with our students are gonna be utilized in our other grade levels and our other schools. And so we are gonna urge our families to try and come in those early days. Give us more time to receive those devices, get them wiped and get them prepared for that start of the school year. If we wait until August twenty-second and twenty-third, there's just really not enough time before the start of the school year. So we're gonna really try to encourage our, our families, if they can, to come in, come in on some of those earlier dates. The iPads that are currently being used by our ninth grade students are gonna be going down to our sixth grade students at the middle school. And then the ones in tenth and eleventh grade are gonna be utilized in kindergarten and first grade. So we'll hopefully be able to complete our distribution by our fees and photos date. There will be some families that are not able to come to any of those dates. We will, will continue to distribute laptops early into the school year as, as students arrive and are ready. In terms of our, our fiber cabling upgrade, we have already scheduled this work. This is gonna be completed over the summer. In two thousand and eleven, we installed our own fiber cabling between our administration building and some of our schools. But the high school is, in one of the remodels that happened earlier, had a lot of, had the fiber implemented between this building and the high school and then within the building. That fiber is not currently meeting the specs of today's standards. And so as we've been improving our switches and trying to increase bandwidth between the main distribution center in the high school and some of the, the halls, we haven't been able to reach full capacity just because of, of the specifications of that cabling. So we are working with a vendor to come in and replace that fiber cabling and bring it up to standards so that we can help remove some of those bottlenecks. The high school is where we have the, the most of our devices. We're bringing in the laptops. And so we want to make sure that our infrastructure is gonna be able to support the needs of our, our staff and students ongoing. Network infrastructure refresh. Over the course of this year, we've replaced forty-nine networks, which is across our, our schools. And we have thirty-six to go. So we're hoping to be able to complete that project next year. A couple of cool things in here. We previously have had Cisco infrastructure. Cisco is a well-known networking brand. But one of the big things with Cisco is their support contracts are very expensive annually, year from, year to year. And as we've been, you know, working with other school districts and vendors and really looking at this, one thing we did was we, we actually did a a, a bit of a bake-off and a, a review and we migrated over to Juniper. Juniper doesn't have the same support models. And so the ongoing costs are much less, leading to an overall lower cost of ownership over the, the span of the switches. Another cool thing as we talk about AI is the switches actually have AI built into their management interface. And so one of the things that it really does is because it sees all the network traffic, it's able to do some analysis and help let us, inform us and let us know when there's issues that, that are occurring across the network. And makes it a little bit easier for us to make sure that we can pinpoint when we start seeing any congestion or network issues across the network. And so that, that was a really cool feature that was also a benefit of migrating over to, to Juniper switches. As we talk about K-one iPad classroom sets, we did move to a one-to-one in grades two through twelve. Probably about two years ago, last year? For second grade. And in our kindergarten and first grade classrooms, we had sets of twelve iPads. And we've been slowly expanding that. I think it initially started with eight.
Six, seven, yeah.
There are our instructional kindergarten K through two is in here. So I love that. I've got some real good back chat. And so as we've implemented a new curriculum like iReady, as we implement Benchmark, one thing that we've seen is the need for teachers to be able to access full classroom sets of iPads to be able to implement some of these benchmark assessments. Going from this year, they've been able to pull their iPads together or using that, that iPad card to bring in. But our, our elementary classrooms are doing some, some really cool things. That was where they're doing the Wolf Pack where there are periods of time where they put a lot of resources and support into all the classrooms. So having full classroom set of devices across all three classrooms has been, you know, a, a need that has come up over the span of the year. And so as I mentioned, those tenth and eleventh grade iPads that are not due for surplus yet will get moved down into the kindergarten and first grade classroom. So even though we've moved to a laptop program at the high school, the devices that are there are not gonna go to use. They're gonna be utilized in the remainder of our buildings and continue to be used. So future technology projects, after we complete the fiber upgrade or our network infrastructure upgrade, we want to come back and, and look at our wireless network infrastructure again and just make sure that we're keeping up with standards. We have been making improvements to access points over the years, but it's really a, a great time to be able to come back and, and do another evaluation across new emergent technologies that have come across. We are also gonna continue to look at security camera upgrades. That's school safety and security is definitely one of our primary concerns. And then the big thing that's coming out, you know, through our risk pool and across K-12 is just additional cybersecurity best practices and initiatives. Some of the things that we've already started to engage on is implementing multi-factor authentication on some of our users that have the most access to our student information systems. But we're gonna continue to, to work on improving some more security prac, cybersecurity practices to help improve that. Another thing that I just wanted to point out as I, as I look at current projects and future technology projects, I did also want to, you know, once again, acknowledge the support of our community for our cap tech levers. And then in the past, we have files for E-Rate funding to help support some of our technology projects. In the past, E-Rate was primarily driven around, we only qualify for category one services just based on our free reduced enrollment. So we only qualify for very limited services. It covered primarily website hosting, cell phone services, telecom communications. And because we were limited on what we were able to apply for, we really didn't get a, a ton of funding. And in, in some cases, it wasn't worth going through the application process. They have made some changes to the E-Rate services that are offered. And now all districts qualify for category two. And so we have applied for E-Rate funding for this year. I'm still waiting for a funding decision letter. But we have applied for just over four hundred thousand dollars with the funding through the E-Rate program. So some of these projects will be getting through just some initial funding for, from E-Rate.
Well, thank you. Any questions from directors? Can we bring Maggie Ty up and make sure she's visible as well?
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
No problem. It's a really quick one. Um, just, I saw your mention of cybersecurity best practices. And I'm just wondering whether district staff get hit by phishing scams using their, their district emails because I know the agency that I work at, we get hit all the time by people claiming to be, you know, like our supervisor needing help buying some gift cards or whatever.
So absolutely, I, I've received one today. Facebook voices, right, are a very common practice that come through. We, we absolutely get regular spam and phishing attacks. We have a lot of training that we provide to our staff. I have a regular message that I send out generally around, you know, holidays and times when we start seeing these attacks to help train them on what to look for in spam and phishing. Oftentimes, if you really look at that sender address, even though it might say that it's the principal, it's coming from a, a, you know, personal Gmail or, or something like that. We also take a look at, you know, grammar. That's one easy way to, to, you know, verify. And then the other piece that we really look at is, you know, don't, you know, respond to emails that you weren't expecting. And if you have questions, reach out to that person over the phone or, or in person and really find out. So, you know, if, if Brett is asking all of a sudden for a bunch of Apple gift cards, I might hitch out.
Thank you.
So, yeah, definitely. We, we definitely do experience that. And that's part of the reason why multi-factor authentication is a, is a huge deal. Because in a lot of those phishing attempts, a lot of it is to, to gain access to your accounts.
Thanks, Andrew.
Can you give us a, a reminder of what are some of the trainings that we give our students, you know, every single time we I know they have iPads already, but not giving you a laptop or these opportunities to provide them like updated training about these kinds of things that Maggie Ty are talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. So on our website, we do have a list of, of a variety of various family resources. Fees and photos and back to school days are another day where we provide some resources. I mentioned that we're gonna have some August, some days in July and August in the message that I'm sending out in the wording part of the review process is I, I was asking if parents can accompany their, their kids to come in and pick up the laptops, only because I do want to have an opportunity to kind of prevent them with, provide them with some additional resources on how to manage the laptops at home and, and what are some of the controls that they might have access to. We will absolutely do that offline as well through emails, website, you know, webinars. During COVID, we did a variety of fireside talks and one specifically around utilizing technology in your, in your home. And so we'll, we'll definitely have opportunities and, and training for not only our students, but also our families. Just to kind of be aware of some of the, the controls and restrictions that can be placed on the, on the devices.
Do it make it mandatory? Because, you know, there are sometimes trainings that all students are, you know, like diversity or I don't know, trains that everybody has to go through and you see that they've gone through. But I mean, given those resources, great, but I doubt it.
At our, at our middle school, we utilize our Gator Time. So Gator Times early in the year are when we provide the training for the students. A lot of times, especially with sixth graders, we actually are, last year, we didn't provide them with their iPads right at, right at the very beginning of the school year. And we waited until about a week into the school year so that we had an opportunity to talk about it. Except, you know, we wanted them to, to be able to come in the building and not immediately be on their screens. Right? We wanted them to be present, you know, aware of some of the, the practices around the building. But we've utilized Gator Time. Across K-five, our instructional tech coaches, along with their teachers, provide regular instruction on digital citizenship. And, you know, that curriculum. Our high school, we do continue to provide that. It's, I don't believe, it's part of certain curriculum, but it's not necessarily in Islander Hours. And so that's something else I think we can look at is making sure that there's my Islander Hour lessons around, continuing digital citizenship, cybersecurity initiatives as well as additional training. The learning too, students can't get emails from outside of the district. So they don't have to worry about the. Our personal students can. And we also want to open it up to our middle school students.
Is that new?
That is something that went in place, I want to say about a year ago, year, year and a half ago. I need to improve my communication. I always never used to be able to do that, but I guess that.
I think we stopped trying.
So we, we did open up our high school student emails. And Deborah, I remember you and I had.
We talked about it years ago.
And talking about opening that up for middle school students as well.
Kara or Trina or B, do you want to weigh in at all too around digital citizenship? Since you're here.
Stay at the elementary classes. Whenever we have the iPads out, very often we're talking about digital citizenship. For our age, it's more about we don't use someone else's iPad or we don't pay attention to their password to get onto their programs. So we do have the lesson from Karen about being safe, talking to people online that you don't know and what to do if that happens.
And it's not necessarily a one and done. You know, there is kind of a big one. And when during the year, it's kind of integrated into everything you do. And you just remind kids, no, you don't take pictures of your friends in the classroom with your iPad.
Any other, any other questions? Thank you, Andrew. I'm surprised Zoom worked without these network upgrades. So thank you for pushing those bits across the internet for us over COVID.
Next up, yeah. So the next topic, or we move, well, I'll just turn it over to you, Director Prescott.
Yeah, I mean, you'll see that as far as major reviews covered in this report, we, I mentioned, we did the math, math review. We did Cardonics. We included that. That was a significant shift at the high school where we partnered with an outside company to really adjust how we do the overall course schedule. It's significantly ahead of where it's been in previous years with being able to have sections identified, teachers identified. Student conflict matrices being worked through now. Like we're in May and we're working through those things now. Where, where we were still working on them into the summer. So that's an exciting shift. There's a big report there from Lisa and the high school team. And the last big review that we do annually is our CCR CTE review. So Jenna's gonna talk about some of the highlights there.
Um, it's strategic that Jamie's sitting next to me so she can kick me because prepare, I prepare herself so somebody gush, right? And I can talk so so much about what the kids are doing in these programs. And so I'll try to keep it, keep it brief. They, the students are incredible. CCR, sort of to back up, most of you know this, it originally called vocational ed. That's been in place for over a hundred years, rebranded in the early two thousands to CTE, Career and Technical Education is the rebrand. Really because vocational ed deservedly so had developed a reputation for a sort of a place to warehouse kids that maybe weren't successful other places. And there also was inconsistency across the system. So part of the rebrand was a new layer of of processes to make sure there's consistency. So that a marketing class being taught at Mercer Island is the same as marketing class being taught in Nebraska. So that was the rebrand. Mercer Island further rebranded along with Bellevue and this across some of these other courses, other districts to CCR College through readiness. And that's a subtle nuance in that our students, for the most part, don't graduate June thirteenth and go to work June fourteenth. Most of them, not all actually, most of them go on to some post-high school. So we teach our courses slightly different. We teach them with an eye to make college majors, internships, building up a resume to be hired down the road. So we just teach them a little bit differently. And so that's the CCR component. We have, currently have fifty-nine CCR courses across two buildings, Islander Middle School and the high school. And they are in every single department except for role language. I'd love to change that someday across six program areas. And essentially, it's any place where there's a career element. So there's a way we can tie a course into industry, excuse me. And there's an application process where they can apply their, their knowledge. Excuse me, I talk all the time. I don't know why I'm this, I'm struggling. Um, so part of this is local control, which is why Shalane High School has a viticulture pathway, how to make wine. And part of that is presenting to the school board and having program advisory committees and the general advisory committee informing us that we're teaching what our kids on Mercer Island need to know for highway titeman jaws in this community. So that's the presentation. And I have, poor Jamie, she's like, can you thank you? Um, I didn't eat popcorn before I came. I know not to do that before I present. Thank you. Jamie asked me to, to edit this down a little bit and I, I said no. So I never think of doing that. She puts up with me. When the teachers, when I ask the teacher, share with me the highlights of your year and they deluged me with all these wonderful things, I just couldn't. It was incredible. So I'm not, you all read, you all read really well. So I'm gonna let you pick up the highlights in there. In, in, in short, we have incredible students who take the opportunities that they're provided to apply their knowledge and they fly with them. They fly with it. And, and we just get out of their way. Coupled with that, we have incredible teachers and one is right here who continue to show up before school, after school, during school and just pour their heart and soul. So Elise, part of what she did is she's brought in an FFA chapter.
Can I say one thing that's not in there?
Oh, please say it.
Um, the plant sale is not in this document. That happened after Jen asked for this. And we had outstanding success this year. We raised
And we had outstanding success this year. We raised over $10,000. It's the highest ever in over thirty years of the plant sale campaign. So lots of crazy success that aren't all highlighted here.
And ask me why there. And then also the kids in the Horns of just embraced it like they were machines. So that's, that's the two parts is our students. And then we have a teaching staff that just is doing incredible things and getting out of the way. The, the last couple of things here, just one fair is I do have the formal report in there about what we were focusing on in terms of what we were bringing online. We really investigated sort of an applied math pathway. You guys have listened to me for that. So thank you for that. And that's coming online. And then also providing those pathways where a kid can sort of investigate, sort of dip their toe in the water and then have another step where they can actually dive into it. And so those were the other courses that came on. And so that's sort of what our work was this week, this year, we'll continue to do that. From our perspective, we're really worried about one of our pathways. We want to work on the one, one program, our health pathway that's a little bit lean right now. And we really like to provide some opportunities for our students there. So that, that's looking forward. If we had a simple, that would be our typical as we go forward. So I'm not going to read all the wonderful things, but I do want to close in with this because it's also not in here. And you may have seen a little bit of word about this. We bring this on Tuesday. These are my digital aids. Right? I open a class, you say, this little individual aid. So these are called tellies. And we can laugh about them because they, it's a funny name, but it's made by the same people that made it, make it Oscars. So you should feel them. They're really, really heavy. These actually specifically are Michael Ketchum's that he's won in the past for kids' work. But the exciting news is on Tuesday, the tellies were announced, the winners were announced. And two of our Mercer High School students won a telly. And I want to put this in context. Oscar, Tony, Grammy, Telly. So I really want to make sure we understand the significance of this. And they were the only high school students who won. So they're going up against news stations and calling kids, the universities and professional organizations. You know, like Michael, Mr. Kethen came out of, you know, obviously came out of a professional production studio. So they were going head to head. So Sophia Chu, if you haven't seen her work, that's incredible. And Jonathan Agar are two that won. And so I couldn't be more proud. Again, that's the best illustration of provide the opportunity for our students and they just fly. Coupled with teachers that, that go above and beyond. And Mr. Ketchum is pouring his heart into, into providing them opportunities.
In your world.
In your life. He's a first year teacher. Yeah. Yeah. So thank you. If there's any questions, believe me.
And we have that up on the website too. We have a story about the two wins and the links to both the videos. Literally opposite the climate change analyst for the winners and all their categories.
They're not long videos. They're.
They're amazing. They're totally worth the watch.
Yeah, watch them. Watch them. I just, amazing. So any questions? Please read that document.
All of the teachers were really hard to come up with the work that we gave to Jen on this document. So we would really appreciate the.
There'll be an assessment after this.
Thank you. Actually, thank you for the detail of the document. Reading about answer work and all that. It's, it's so expensive now. It's a really good resource for parents just kind of see what's happening in our schools under CCR.
Our cybersecurity hits, they won a national award too. I mean, they're just kids, kids. We really don't have any business standing in front of them. All right. I think I'm done. Lucky, lucky. I think a gold star on my feet down. All right. I, I don't think we're up first, right? For a second. No, I think there's formal action that has to be taken.
Yes.
Just hang.
If there are no other questions, could I get a motion to find the superintendent in compliance with OE ten instructional program?
So good.
Okay, with that, all in favor, students? Aye, aye. And directors? With that, it's one zero four zero to find the superintendent in compliance. Thank you very much.
I can I just say thank you for all your work. This is, this is really the areas where, where that allows, you know, a group of our students to really find. And, and the examples are fantastic. And thank you. I know it's definitely more focused on the upper level or older kids. But, but you know, with the communications, our younger students are starting to learn about that and they're having successes as well. So, you know, this really is making a lifelong impact. We, we met with Sarah Olson, who teaches the robotics at the middle school. She's, she's doing incredible things with the robotics teams at the high school. And what's happening is the middle school is advancing faster. And so we're having to push high school level robots into the middle school, which is going to drive the whole system up. It's really wonderful. And so that, that I'm really excited to see where that goes to. She's incredible. We're just so lucky.
That's, it's really exciting to bring kids together around these passions so they can see them and work together on them. And you know, many cases, it doesn't have to be an exact match between passion and subject, but to have the highly valuable to a group of kids to learn about collaboration and dive deep into, you know, even if it's a little bit unfamiliar territory, lots of learning to be had. So thank you.
A safe place to experiment. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Now.
So let's see, we, we will move on to recognitions and public input. First, we'll do recognitions.
Do you want to wait till six for that and go ahead and sneak in for a?
Sure. Just because some of our recognition, they won't be here. You could have talked more. Okay, let's move on to for a board policy eighteen hundred OE ten instructional program, ninth grade course, social studies of Dacha.
Great. As you may recall, I believe it was January, we gave an update on some new courses coming online this year. My event before the winter break. And one of those was a new geography course in our ninth grade. And here tonight is now the team coming back because they've selected core materials, which is requirement for you to approve it before we can start purchasing and using that. So I'll turn it over to Director Prescott. I believe we have at least one both teachers from our self-studies department, Amanda Maddox and Dave Wilkie.
Yeah. So this social studies text adoption went through the instructional materials committee. They presented a few weeks ago, received unanimous approval from the committee to move forward with the adoption of this text. I will let Amanda and Dave take it over and walk through the text they've chosen and why. And share a little bit about why they chose what they did, how excited they are for students next year.
Okay, thanks, Jamie. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we looked at a number of textbooks, four or five of, they were all the mainstream ones. We've just figured out what other districts were teaching for human geography and got a hold of all of those. I guess like most textbook adoption processes, we quickly eliminated some for various reasons. Just, you know, looked student unfriendly, were poorly organized and very quickly settled on two, which we ran through the usual process with rubrics. We had a couple of student groups look through them. We, some current ninth graders. And we gave out the different rubrics, one that we had made as a department and the diversity rubric from the district. And did all of that process, the two frontrunners were mainstream. I believe it was a Pearson book. And then the other that we ended up choosing was National Geographic, which I guess isn't a surprise that for a geography course, we landed on a National Geographic book. It really beautiful. And the, there are various things that the students and the teachers said about them. And I'll, I'll just try to summarize them because we forwarded all of those rubrics and documents. But the book is just really gorgeous and attractive, really up to date, looks very modern. The other one, which did have a few advantages, was not as high interest for the students. And looked very much like a traditional textbook. One of the things about our ninth grade class is it's an elective. And so we wanted something that you know, students would look at the book for the class and be like, oh, that really looks like a great time and want to check it out. And so National Geographic really fit the bill in that regard and was equal to or better than the other book in most things. And I think Amanda's going to cover the slight concern we had with the digital implementation on the part of National Geographic. And we're hoping that gets better over time, but it was, it was nearly as good as the other one. And then Amanda put together some great slides that I think you're looking at right now of the book. So you can just get a sense of how engaging it is and some of its features. And I'll let Amanda talk about some more of that.
Yeah. So I can add a little bit more about the book itself. Some of the really cool features, one thing that the student group pointed out that our, us as teachers totally missed is that the key terms are both highlighted and bolded. And that actually stuck out to the students a lot. The students also immediately were like, oh, National Geographic, that's cool. But they couldn't give a substantive reason as to why National Geographic was cool. I do think it has that, that factor though. And so that was exciting. I think the biggest factor that the teachers noticed, if you can scroll down on the slides, they have case studies. I think one more. So they have kind of more modern scenarios and they have infographics off to the side. And it's supported outside. And I believe that we were doing some investigation on their website. And we found that like they keep putting out these case studies. And so it is supported through National Geographic. And so to like talk about a specific scenario or bring in current events and keep it updated as possible. So we were excited about that within the National Geographic text. The one comment that the students did make is that a typical textbook might have three to four pictures a page. And National Geographic just is doing like one big pretty picture. And so some of the students were like, oh, man, three quarters of a page of text as compared to maybe like a half a page of text or something like that. So, but yeah, that they like those key terms. They thought the book looked pretty modern. They did have a little bit of like, oh, there's one picture instead of two, three, four pictures on a page. In the inverse, the teachers actually liked that there was larger images because a lot of what this is going to do is like map and graph work in human geo. And so having a large map makes a lot more sense than a quarter page map. So teachers were particularly happy about that. The big concern is I think about the digital resource. So if you go up one slide, you can see I just took a screenshot of like the accessibility. And what you're seeing is that the page zooms in and out almost like a PDF. Like they didn't, for some reason, change it. So it's a digital book first. It's a PDF of the book that has some interactive features. So it can zoom in and out of a page. But it can't do two pages at once for some reason. And it does read to you. It does have all of the like, it does have audio of some of the key terms. So there is all of those accessibility features, but there just isn't a hate, like a text that changes on a phone or an iPad or a computer. It just is a PDF that you have to zoom in and out of. So that was, I think, the major drawback that some of the teachers saw. But I think our plan is to both buy a physical and digital book. So we will have both available. And there was the listen to the page. So we didn't see this as a, something that we, that wasn't surmountable. And the quality of the book just kind of spoke for itself. Dave, anything else to add? Did I hit this field?
No, I think that was great. All of those things are true. And I guess I would just add that I actually really liked the PDF format because I like PDFs. And so that wasn't universally everybody's favorite. At least, I, I at least was an outlier in favor of that.
Any, any questions, directors?
I have a question. I hadn't really thought before about whether this was an AP course or not. And I realize that's not the purpose of, of your, your appearing here with us tonight. I'm just curious whether students can choose to take the AP if they want, even though it's not specifically an AP course.
Right now, no. And the same reason it's not an AP course and then it's honors is to accommodate the additional curriculum for climate change, which we're going to be covering with supplemental materials in addition to the stuff which is in the geography books. And the different books were kind of even Steven in that regard. But we have a separate curriculum for climate change. And as you probably know, the AP can be pretty crowded. And so we didn't think that was potentially unfair to cram all of that into a freshman course. So that was a concern. If we make some modifications later, that's in the realm of possibility and it's something we talked about. But having not taught the course and not integrated those two curriculums, the teachers definitely wanted to see how this played out before.
A hundred percent. Yeah, that makes total sense. Yeah. I was just curious because we hadn't really heard that detail before. Like I didn't even realize there was an AP. So now I know more. Thank you.
Yep.
And I think this textbook is an AP edition. So we have left ourselves the space to kind of move into that. Or if we do have really highly motivated kids and maybe we run some like sessions before school for those who are interested. I'm not sure we would host the AP at our school itself, but I think that they still have the opportunity to take it. And it is an AP textbook. So we have kind of left ourselves that flexibility for the.
Or maybe hypothetically, some kids could in an old, in a later grade, come back and do kind of like an independent study and prepare for the exam if they wanted to.
Sure. And I'll just throw in that we have lots of kids in, in the other 10th grade courses that will take the AP European or the AP World exams if they want. There's no requirement in that case that you go through an AP course. And so that's certainly something a diligent student could choose to do on their own. And you know, there's no rule against that at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What, I know one of the desires of this, we've been talking about as a department and as a district for a little while is just driving more students to take four years of social studies. What, where did it or where does it sit right now? Do you know what enrollment is in the course? Did you get two sections, one section?
We did get two sections and both sections are pretty full. They were around that thirty person marker. So two full sections. Which is, we think, pretty good for a brand new course being offered.
Outstanding. Does the, I guess the PDF will work in the new laptops. Will the digital text work in the new laptops? If it was a true digital text?
I would have to confer with one of our IDC's.
If it's send gate, it's send gate.
Yeah, vendors. We already have texts that do, we, we have vendors that we provide, that provide online access group, digital text. And yeah, so they, we already have examples of how this will work and it hasn't been problematic.
That's nice. And with the PDF, you take notes in the book and things like that too, which is great. And will parents have access to this so that they can see it doesn't go home? How does, how does that work?
I mean, they will, students will receive a text. They'll check it out like any other textbook. So parents are welcome to with the permission of their child, I guess, to produce their text. There won't be a parent login, just like we don't have for other textbooks. But if they wanted to see what it looked like, their student could pull up their account and see it at any time.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Do we need to, do we do approval today?
It would be helpful just to get ordering going, but if you'd rather wait for a period, we have had it available at the district office for a period of time to the community. But if you'd rather put it as a second reading, we can hold off until later in June.
Do I have a motion from a board member to approve the textbook today?
I move that we approve it today.
Second, Deborah. Okay, with that, all in favor, students?
Aye.
Aye. And directors?
Aye.
Aye.
So with that, we have one zero four zero approval of your new textbook. Thank you.
Awesome. Amanda and Dave, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We got to say one more time.
So another course that we had brought at the same time to the attention of the board for our employees was also marine science. And Elise and Ben are back to talk about course materials here again, core instructional materials. Jamie?
Now it's a complete introduction. Well, hi, I'm happy to be here.
Well, hi, I'm happy to be here and tell you guys more about marine science. Since we last spoke, we got the class approved, I started looking at curriculum. And really, the goal of this class is to help build out the agriculture and natural resources pathway. And one thing that I really want to emphasize is how much the science. And the CCR lens were both utilized in the review of this book and the other one I looked at. I'm undressed and you can go to the next slide. So this book here, Marine Science by Peter Castro and Michael Huber, was the selection. I went through several different marine science textbooks, narrowed it down to two that we ordered, looked through. Had a group of other teachers, staff, students, community members also review for diversity and equity. And this book really stood out because it was written by two very renowned marine scientists with very diverse backgrounds. Peter Castro, I actually got the pleasure of learning from as a marine science student. The University of Hawaii and was an amazing tropical focused marine scientist. Castro or Huber has a background more Antarctic and Antarctic environment. So the broad range of knowledge that they both bring and long expansive careers. Was really something that I could see throughout the book in all of the various units. It also has alignment with the NGSS science standards. But not only that, it also has alignment with the ocean literacy standards. Which if you are not familiar with the National Marine Educators Association, you probably have never heard of before. But it is a set of seven standards that was developed by the National Marine Educators Association. As checkpoints of what our students really should know about the marine environment to be a global citizen. Things like the ocean, the earth has one big ocean with many features. The ocean and life in the ocean shape the features of earth. The ocean is a major influence on weather and climate. The ocean has made earth habitable and the ocean supports a great diversity of life and ecosystems. The ocean and humans are inextricably connected interconnected and the ocean is largely unexplored. This document has several pages of connections. That the book hits on for those standards, which is really amazing. This textbook is endorsed by the National Marine Educators Association. And of course, having the NGSS standards is huge for our science classes. It hits on every single one of our life science standards. And there are also some of the physical science standards as well. Due to the the study of waves, currents and plate tectonics. So that was a huge benefit to this book. The program also has a really well laid out lab manual, a great teacher's edition and a digital version. Which is really accessible for both the student side and for the educator side. You can actually assign. Specific questions in the module. You can highlight certain passages that your students would then see. There's all sorts of really great features that I think will pair well with the rollout of the new laptops at the high school next year. And overall navigating it was really simple and really engaging. The textbook is at a twelve point nine two average reading level. But there are a lot of really well developed scaffolds throughout the book. There, like the geography book, is bolded and highlighted key terms. And that was really helpful. There are also side pullouts that have connections to previously learned materials. And that was something that students, when they reviewed the book, thought was very helpful. It's also one of the things that as a science teacher, I find so important to help encourage our students. To make those real world connections and develop that critical thinking skill. There's a lot of great pictures captioned, there are scaffolds that help promote. One of my students in particular love these ripple effect features that are on various pages. And it's basically just a summarization rewording. It is how this connects to us as a human species. How does this topic that we're studying, like tectonics, for example, impact me on a day to day basis? And it's a really cool way for students to really see the impact of what they're learning in their daily life.
Don't you want to read that right now and see how?
I don't really want to read the other textbook. Teaching in horticulture right now. So those were some of the things that really stood out in this book. For the selection process of this book, I tried to identify as many marine science textbooks as I can at the high school level. That's kind of a hard ask. There's not a ton out there. But I did find two really well put together books and got both of those for review. And had community members, staff, students, etc. Review the books. And a review of the alignment documents of this book. The alignment to the Mercer Island values, vision, mission and board fundamental fundamentals. Yeah, the other book just couldn't stand a chance next to this one. The rigorous content is exposed in a way that is really approachable for many of our students. There's real world data that's embedded that students can use to model in class. The data is for current ongoing research. And they are able to manipulate that data hands on in the classroom through projects and labs that are set up. Through the units of the book. There is a great focus on inquiry and promoting critical thinking, problem solving skills. Which are so incredibly important for all students. It also provides a lot of opportunities to learn while developing empathy and responsible citizenship. Which of course, the climate change topics that are going to be hit on that geography class are going to be so important as well. So really having that connection to our environment. And we are so deeply connected to the marine environment in the Seattle area. And having this book help explore those local and global concerns will be huge for our students. This book also received the highest diversity and equity score from all of our reviewers. And one side down. It had a great alignment to the course framework, which are listed with the letters. Ocean ecosystems, seafloor, ocean ecology, ocean zoology, waves, ocean resources and protecting marine habitats. The book units, which there are several chapters in each of the units. But ocean environment, the organisms of the ocean, structure and function of marine ecosystems and humans in the sea. Within each unit and each chapter of this book, there is a huge emphasis on how. These specific ideas relate to careers, how they relate to current real world research. And how they relate to things that students can do in a hands on way to get involved in real time. There are ideas of organizations that students can get involved with. There's ideas of restoration projects, there's all sorts of great things that are actionable for our students, which for me is huge. And the alignment of both the course framework and the textbook just makes my job a whole heck of a lot easier as well. For implementation, hopefully, we will be able to have both the online subscription and the physical copies of the textbook. Having the lab manuals will be a huge help in getting a full curriculum of labs. Set up and ready to go for students. And you know, a little bit of professional development time for me to orient myself to the system a little bit deeper. And really explore all that it has to offer at a at a deeper level. So that I can create the curriculum around the book instead of just. These are the things I have to teach now I got figured out. And as a CTE teacher, I've never had a textbook to utilize in any of my classes like this. And I'm very excited to create curriculum around something so well structured.
I will say, I did not do this at the beginning, but it also received unanimous approval from the instructional materials committee. So for whatever that's worth, it was a also unanimous decision.
Thank you. Any questions from directors? I'm curious on the. On the lab, so you're you're not utilizing the lab manual, are going to create your own lab?
So I would like to utilize the lab manual to structure most of the labs for the class. I want to also leave room for some labs that may not be included in that. More specifically tailored to our class, our community and our spaces. But I do plan to use the lab manual to create a really good framework of what labs to include, the structures of them. And the materials for the students in the lab manual as well.
And do we see the book being the primary curriculum? What do you see supplemental with it or is the book supplemental?
So I see the book guiding a lot of the base material. There are really amazing organizations that have great work in environmental justice, equity. And diversity. And I have utilized bits and pieces of those in the horticulture program. There's a great orca and salmon research, resource that they've developed. On how the connections between native people in the coastalish areas, salmon, orcas, dams. All of these factors relate to our declining population of orcas currently. And those are things that I would bring into supplement that make it a more localized approach for students. But this would definitely be the base of what we cover.
I am going to. Lift up Elise a little bit because she's not going to bring it forward, but she has a phenomenal program advisory committee. She has really deep roots in the Seattle Aquarium and has connections in the marine science community that are really phenomenal. And she is already pushing what we're doing here. I'm really excited to see what, you're back to my original point about, you know, providing the opportunity for our students. And then we have instructors that just go over and over and beyond what is typical classroom. We are, she just got approval and thank you for the Merchan School District. And all of us to do this is to do an installation of an aquaponics system, a full installation. And so that when you ask the question of as is the base, it is. But we also have somebody that really is tied into local. The local industry and what the the latest cutting edge science that's involved in that industry. And then providing that opportunity to our students to learn what it is and how we how we utilize it. So that's really exciting.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Along that, I just want to say one thing that I think is so freaking cool and so exciting to me. In my work at the Seattle Aquarium, my work with their hatchery display. And I was at a conference a couple of weeks ago that was focused on climate. It was a Washington Climate Summit and had teachers from all over the state, all sorts of different disciplines. Actually included world language, shocking. One Spanish teacher came out for the conference. But I talked to many educators there that have salmon eggs that they raise in their classroom. And then work with tribes, local tribes and with the fisheries department to actually release them. Take the students out on the trip to release them. And that is one thing I am working on connecting with all the right people for our specific portion of the state. In trying to see what other items like that we can bring in. In addition to having the aquaponic system, planning to have a hundred gallon tank in the classroom, saltwater. Where students are going to be able to collect data of observations of species throughout the environment. So all of that is going to be a great supplement to the test.
I just wanted to chime in and say it's so great that this is available. I'm really excited about this class. I'm really excited about this textbook. I took a, I did an independent study my junior year of high school on the East Coast in marine biology. And there was nothing available. My teacher looked and looked and he really could not find any materials appropriate for high school students. So he just kind of winged it and like made stuff up and we went on a field trip and you know, collected stuff and put it in a bucket, right? But it's wonderful to see that this is here and that you have such a kind of like robust experience planned for the students. So thank you for what you're doing and I really look forward to hearing more about how it goes, so.
I think our next proposal when we come to this body is we're going to ask for a Merchan School District research vessel.
Definitely, deep deep dive sub for sure. Also, I'd like to see a live marine mammal mascot for the high school, you know, not a snail like a seal.
Okay, we need to take action on this.
It can be discussion if you want to put it as a second reading, we didn't want to be presumptive, but.
Do I have a motion to approve these textbook, this textbook?
So moved.
Second. With that promotion, students all in favor? And directors all in favor? That we've got one zero four zero approval for marine textbook.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It sounds like a wonderful course.
Let us move to recognitions and then I'll look in. Can we do a quick shuffle? Actually, we can just leave that there. So some recognitions. We will have more information on this, but this is just hot off the presses coming in from our DI group. We sent a number of teams to Global, which is where they've been competing for the past week. And we brought home three first place awards, one second place award, one fourth place award. And then several others scored in the top ten. And then we had five special awards amongst our teams. And so to have three global champions out of our school district is pretty amazing. We have two percent of all the teams represented there. And we have fourteen percent of the first place awards. So a great event for our teams. We'll bring them to an upcoming board meeting, but we're quite excited, so.
Can I just, can I just make a note that one of our two Telly award winners was on that second place award winning team? So Jonathan Agar had a very, very good day.
And then I'd like to bring Ava Zhang up to the table here. Come on up, Ava.
Can you sit down or am I?
Yes, please. So I'll let maybe Andrew talk too, but I wanted to introduce you to our newest board member elect. Ava will represent the junior, the junior school board representative beginning next fall. We had a number of really impressive candidates and I think we're going to be able to find other spaces. But Ava's been on the superintendent student advisory committee where she served as a leader. She's a leader in DECA, cross country, BAM, Senate and others. And so I think she's going to be a great addition to our board, bringing another great perspective from our students. And step in. Andrew?
Yeah, me and Asha just prepared some things that we wanted to say. So Asha wrote just a little piece she couldn't make it as she's running for cross country or super track state. She said, I'm so excited to be working with Ava next year. She really stood out as an articulate and intelligent student during her interview process. I believe that she will represent the student body well in the role of the student board rep. And will be dedicated to the improvement of the district. And though no one can replace Andrew himself, I think that Ava will be more willing to fill the big shoes that he'll leave behind. And she will continue to redefine what a school board rep is. Congratulations once again. And now it's time to get to work. Adding on, Ava, you really impressed me during the interview. You had great answers and your answers were thoughtful and very caring. Just today Ava was at the staff meeting in front with four or five other high school senators. And our superintendent student advisory talking about schoolage use and homework over grades. And that is far scarier. Um, and that is far scarier than anything here. Um, so speaking at a staff meeting already is just very impressive. And she did a great job um being kind, um, but sharing the student opinion. So um, I know as a sophomore in your position, it's a very exciting and stressful time, but I know that you'll succeed. So congratulations once again.
Ava, give the floor to you. You want to make a few remarks and then I'm sure board members will want to talk too, but um, congratulations and uh tell us more about you.
Yeah, um, I'm super excited to be like given this opportunity and I never thought I'd be able to do this. But I'm super excited to like see what the board can do and like how much we can improve our school district. And I'm super excited for the next year, next few years.
Thank you very much. Any comments from board members? I, I was very pleased to participate in my first ever student director interviews. Uh, so really enjoyed talking to you and the rest of the candidates. Uh, we've got a lot in store, of course, uh, a lot of expectations for our student directors. And I think you raised some interesting questions for us and to think about policy more. And uh, how do student directors participate in the formation of policy? And uh, we will have to look at that and then take some action on that for sure. So thank you very much uh for joining us in uh September, okay?
Congratulations. Look forward to it.
Yeah, welcome.
All right. Thank you very much.
What's actually, we'll do it in September. Okay, uh, with that, let us move to uh public input. We've got one public uh input from Alexandra Kathy Roberts. Uh, is that on uh video? And I'll just read something for a moment. This is our disclaimer. Uh, the meeting is a meeting of the board and public. It is not a public meeting that guarantees interaction between members of the public and members of the board. Uh, when addressing the board at the meeting, please limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson of the concern of the group concerned and if desired, provide written documentation to the board secretary. Public comments that name or otherwise identify a district student are not permitted without permission of the student's parent or legal guardian. The board may direct the superintendent to respond at a later date to the issues expressed. And thank you, Alexandra. With that, please.
I'm going to keep this brief. Sorry if I trip over my words. I'm suffering from a light concussion right now. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Alice Kind Robert and I am a senior at Merschon High School. And I appreciate this opportunity to share a student perspective uh of our social studies and health curriculum. Uh, for those who don't know, CREST does something called a community action project where seniors choose a problem in their community which affects them or people they know and try to tackle it to the best of their abilities. Uh, this year, me and my partner chose to pick, uh, sort of looking to the lack of LGBTQ plus inclusivity in our social studies and health classes. Though focusing on the former, uh, for this project, we looked online for statistics on LGBTQ plus support in Washington, which informed us that seventy-five percent of Washingtonians not only tolerate but support the LGBTQ plus community. Uh, and survey, we also surveyed students to see what uh people knew about this historic mo- about historic moments in the LGBTQ civil rights movement and specific terms used to describe uh people of the community. Uh, for the first question, students were asked what they think they've learned about the LGBTQ plus community in both social studies and health. From this, we found the majority of students feel they haven't learned much about the LGBTQ plus in both subjects, especially in social studies. Uh, next, we asked students if they knew what the Stonewall riots were. Uh, and learned that only around sixty percent uh knew of this very fruitful moment in uh LGBTQ plus history, uh, when asked them about specific terms. Uh, and found that while eighty percent were aware of the difference between pansexual and bisexual, only fifty-five and fifty percent uh knew the meaning of agendered and biromantic respectively. Finally, we asked whether or not students would like a unit around LGBTQ plus uh in their classes to wish around fifty percent yes, said yes, but more importantly, only seven people said no. Uh, these responses, we feel not only shows a need, but a desire for more education on this subject. And we would uh appreciate if you would consider adding uh these in future years. Thanks.
Thank you very much for taking the time to share. Most appreciated. Okay, um, with that, we will end public input. And uh, and move to our next item. Uh, let's see, uh, budgeting and uh, quote, quote, number four, C, board policy two hundred and twenty-six. Uh, budgeting and financial planning.
All right, uh, provided to you is uh two items, well, actually three items. The budget status reports through April and through March, but also the active financial dashboard, which we'll walk you through right now. There are several items I'd like to touch upon in this. I'll say kind of the best for last. Um, but we are through two-thirds of our year, about sixty-six percent of our fiscal year or through the end of April in this report. Um, if we look at our expenditures, we're at sixty-three point six percent of the year, uh, sixty-six percent. So under by about three percent, which is excellent regarding our expenditures. On the revenue side, it's sixty-six point three percent, right where we should be, which is excellent budgeting. And as always, in April, we see a large chunk of our local taxes, hence the significant uptick in revenue for the month of April. Um, I'll direct you down to what I call the widget of the table on the left bottom side, green where it says uh funds. In particular, um, under transportation, we have uh currently in the bank about a little over a million dollars. And I bring that up because depreciation on our existing buses will come in August at about five hundred and sixty-four thousand per year. And we are looking to purchase two more electric buses at that time, depending when when depreciation comes in. As you know, we currently have one electric bus in the lot. It will go into rotation here in the coming weeks prior to the end of school. And then we hope to see the second electric bus in the coming weeks. And then the best for last, under that table or widget is our capital fund loan repayment. We have completed that repayment as of the end of uh April at two million twenty-seven thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars with zero remaining. So that has been cured. And we are done. There we go. Any questions regarding the report?
Uh, I'm surprised we're getting uh three electric buses. That was magic.
Well, depreciation is given to split state every August based on the schedule, amortization schedule, if you will, on the buses that exist. And we hope to purchase two more in August. We hope to, yeah, physical.
Congratulations. That's lovely. Welcome.
Of course, it might be eighteen months by the time we receive them, but we can purchase them.
I'm, I'm seeing that fund bound current fund balance per that. Is that, is this at this moment?
Yeah, at this moment.
Cause we just got it in flux and.
Yeah, that's where you get all our local tax and it looks great. And then what the state does, if you notice on, I put the percentage annual portionment. You'll get the May apportionment, you'll see that gives five percent in a, in May, knowing that we've received this large chunk of local taxes. So then we'll dig into that fund balance to pay, get us through. It's the ebbs and flows of our state apportionment. Yeah.
I figure you would make a bigger deal of it.
Okay, any other questions? And uh anything else on this, this topic now?
No.
No? All right. Thank you. We look forward to our study session uh in June, right?
Uh, yes, next Thursday, June the first. He said June. I went, oh, it's only a few weeks away. Now it's next week.
All right, thank you. Um, let's move uh, move forward to uh four D. Communications for the board, drop interlocal. Great. Um, so if, we'll bring it up here in a moment. We have been doing quite a bit of work behind the scenes. I really want to uh extend my appreciation to Michelle and Aaron, who have been working um hard alongside. I kind of came up with conceptual ideas of what I've heard from you, what I think um would make the most sense for this partnership. And then um Aaron and Michelle really um put it together in terms of what this can look like um as it goes forward. This has not been uh sent for approval to the city. Uh, at this time, we have sent it to uh the city manager and the city manager's office to start looking into it. Um, and to get input from them between now and when you would um approve it, which would likely be at one of your two gym leaders. The change that I expect to see from the city is they will probably, based on their different unions, they will probably have some language in there. Uh, we did the best we could projecting what we thought might be how they calculate FTE or whatnot. They will probably have some changes there. But the big picture view uh of this interlocal uh goes back to extending the opportunity for city employees to bring their children to Merschon for this year. Um, it was important that we didn't extend more um latitude or opportunity to city employees than we would our very own uh district employees. We wanted to make sure that that was consistent and there wasn't greater benefit. Um, there's a little difference too, because they don't, none of them work in one of our schools. So the language around placement is really up to the district based on capacity um with our four elementary schools. We also took a look at, well, what happens if a particular in uh employee um from the city, you know, leaves employment from the city? And what, how do we handle that? Uh, as they go through, we also thought about part-time versus full-time and then seasonal. And again, trying to keep it consistent uh and and within the parameters. So we also just tried to think about what your interests were and that interest being uh thinking about our partnership with city staff being very similar to the service that we're doing for our community. And that this isn't about trying to backfill um for economic reasons and budgetary reasons. There's a piece of this that's also parity with the youth and family services counselors. Uh, and then again, as I reported, I believe in the last board meeting, uh, the city manager was quite um shocked by the number of staff who we might likely see taking advantage of this. She thought that we might see um upwards of ten to fifteen s- city staff members uh looking for this year with another ten to fifteen potentially for the following school year. Um, and so I think you would ask at the last meeting, are those elementary students or whatnot? And I still don't know that. I, I want to see. So um, we are happy to take any questions that you have um tonight, based on the interlocal. This is just the first reading, looking for feedback certainly. And we're not in a major rush on this. Uh, once we do get it finalized, you'll be first to approve it and then it will go to the city. That's similar to the interlocal we have with the counselors. The city starts with it and then it comes to you because the nexus of control or responsibility really resides with the school district in this matter. So we'll take questions. Thank you. Any questions from directors?
I don't have a question, um, more of a comment that, you know, for me, it's uh the main benefit is, is building community. Our, our, our government workers are serving us and our community, our children and, and to be able to um, give back in a way that um that benefits all of us, I think, is just a really um great demonstration of inclusion and community building.
I appreciate that you uh explained how this is really integrity with our school district staff as well. And so, um, yeah, I read through this and I, I really like it. And I'm glad that we're starting to uh be more intentional about our partnership and what does that mean? And um, you know, because it is all inclusive, right? If we work with them, it'd be great to make sure that they're part of the community in our school community as well. So I'm excited.
Real-time fact checking. Michelle informs me, we just got our first choice transfer application today from a city employee. Aaron or Michelle, did you want to add anything as drafters of this alongside me?
I just wanted to chime in to say, I know it's going to go through more review, but it looks really good to me and it seems very fair to me. And, and again, yeah, it is about building community and it, it is about equity. So great, great work, everybody.
And I, I think we share same similar interest in retention of uh our staff and employees with the city as well as the school district. So I think that shared interest is, is just wonderful and lovely. Um, so I noticed though we, the district can specify where the students go with school. Does that change every year or will that be consistent uh once a student blends into the school? Once we establish their homeschool, that becomes their homeschool unless they want to go through an intra-district transfer. Um, I would anticipate that if um, let's say Island Park is where we have space for a second grader. Obviously for a, a city staff member who might be working on the north end, they may want West Mercer or Northwood. And so they might apply for an intra-district transfer, but wherever we establish their homeschool will then be their homeschool. And uh, we wouldn't move them year to year.
Is, is there something in here about placement for siblings? I mean, will they get the same homeschool?
Um, to the extent that we can, that doesn't always work out. Um, but to the extent that we can, and that, that will follow more in the policy work that we'll have to do. Once the interlocal goes through, we'll then need to update our entire policy and then we'll codify some of that in there. Uh, yeah, that, that's, that's a great uh in your point you're raising here. This is a high-level abstract document that gives over the high-level intent as well as uh the high-level interests of the board. There's a district policy that will go into the much more detailed particulars and I, I presume as well uh escalation plan if I want to appeal or something like that. Yes, and then there's all of the different appeal, appeal rights related to choice transfer. Um, Aaron, do you want to weigh in about policy things at all?
Yeah, in terms of policy, it's would be set up to be consistent uh with all applicable laws and also ensure that everyone is treated the same. Um, we don't want any uh risk of discriminatory practice. We also can't be displacing students that are residents here as well. So there are things related to that. Um, and at the core of it is, everyone was talking about, it is about maintaining um a, the supports within our community that we get from the city and bringing them, maintaining their connection to our community, which ultimately will help the district. So there is a benefit to the district in terms of keeping consistency with our city staff who provide us essential services like water um and fire, etc. So there, there is a knock-on benefit to the district as far as policies um go. We'll just have to make sure that we have it sort of set up um so that it adheres to the full law and it'd be readily understood by all parties trying to operate within that.
I assume we're using the city's definition of city employee, like if they outsource our fire department. I mean, I'm not sure.
So we're very specific. We haven't had um lengthy conversations with the city. Because it really, my understanding is we wanted to have the board have first sort of um opportunity to see what we've written down. Um, sort of taking the force and we codifies what the board wants. So we're not sure if what we've captured really identifies who is the employee, but it's our understanding that it's a um regular, a person who is on a regular contract, such that they would qualify for uh paid benefits. Um, but that's assumption for what we're able to clean just uh through our interaction, the fact we haven't had the specific um conversation. So it would be based on, on whatever a city considers its employees on a regular basis, not the one who's seasonal. Because again, we're talking about year-round attendance. Um, so seasonal would be somewhat problematic because so we may have seasonal employees that they uh, they have as well. So.
And I think where you're going is if the city, which they've been talking publicly about fire department and if it goes to an entity, a regional fire district or another city as a partner, what will that mean? And so I think that's a great thing to raise and we'll definitely look into, you know, what does that mean? I think at that point, we need to ask the city who they're in, in, who they consider to be city employees. Because we definitely know that, you know, people change firehouses. And, you know, what could that mean for our, for our keep track of students?
Well, it's also who is an ongoing point. So are the way it's drafted now is parallel of what a employee in the school district is and how it. Well, it's also who is an ongoing point, so are the way it's drafted now is to parallel what a employee of the school district is and how a school district employee. Because we don't want the city to have superior benefits than that's provided for our employees. So it was supposed to be parallel on that, so people could be, have a change of status. And so we tried to address that ahead of time.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, I know the complication of the fire department situation, but would police officers be able to receive this benefit?
Yes, city employees, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think there's something like, if we have one definition of favoring community and anybody who lives or and or works on this island as part of the city, that would be more broadly inclusive. If we had another definition that was around similar benefits and or retention, that might be a little different definition, because at the end of somebody who works for somebody other than the city indirectly works for the city, city. You know, the retention isn't up to the city at that point.
Right, so it's not intended to capture vendors that the city contracts with. It's intended to capture those who provide direct services to the city in which we have a continuous border. So, and typically the services they're providing have a benefit to all of our, we have the same constituents, it's just we serve the younger population. So.
I don't, I don't think it'll be, I mean, I was just curious, because I don't know how we're talking about setting it up, and I know they haven't made a decision, but you know, we just stick to city employee and then they define that.
Exactly, which is why I think they want to talk, because they have, you know, they have labor relations with their unions and others too, and so I'm sure there's nuances.
And I said, we haven't had those conversations, because we want, before we had those, we wanted to make sure that this captured what the board was hoping to achieve. So we haven't, this has not been vetted by their attorney or anyone, it's just us trying to capture the board's concept.
Thank you very much, this sounds great. And I think you've got a thumbs up from board members to proceed with discussion with the city for sure. So, thank you. All right, let's continue proceeding forward. Looks like we picked the consent agenda this evening. Five on the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve? And a second please. With that, all in favor, students?
Aye.
Aye, and directors?
Aye.
Aye.
We've got one, zero and four, zero for approval for the consent agenda. And superintendent announcements?
Just as we head into the long weekend again, we will then start heading into the summer and just a reminder that we do have summer hours which change for this building. And then there are a number of holidays as well, so we'll be posting those, but Fridays, the building will be closed to the public. And will be closed as a district on Fridays. We will have some staff members who will work on Fridays, but many will choose to take that vacation. And there's also some options of working from home there. So we're trying to remain flexible with our staff members, especially as we get into the summer months, but that's it for announcements.
Thank you, let's just leave it for. February.
So it's pretty much a very slow time where people are, have taken vacations and then plan for next year. There is a meeting on Tuesday that's the, that's going to be talking about the interim session opportunities, so I'll have more to report next time.
Thank you, any board member announcements, Maggie Chubb?
Sure.
Well, I really enjoyed our visit to Island Elementary School, it was really nice to see the students. And I just love how vibrant it is. And I came out of that wanting to be a kindergarten teacher. I'm like, what is my best grade? Like, I, because I was talking to a teacher and he's like, her favorite was like second, and another teacher's like, her sweet spot was, I'm like, oh, we all have sweet spots of what we want to get. So I'm trying to think about my sweet spot, and I, after, we sat in a couple of classrooms, it was like kindergarten for me.
From higher.
Yeah, I, I will add, thank you to Sean Adamac for putting together the most amazing elementary school level rock band ever. They just had their big, big performance on Tuesday night, so.
That was great, I know, we toured the music room and we, they also had a wonderful music program and they were doing therapy and dancing. And yeah, I'm just really amazed, and it kind of brought up to, I also attended the West Mercer class meeting and out of that, one of the mother was saying how when she was new on the island, she saw there's a big kind of, kind of poster board that says that number one in something, and she's like, you know, are we still, you know, the excellent school? And then the principal, Maggie, is like, what are you talking about? And so it may have been a couple of years ago, we're in excellence, and she was saying that that kind of drew her to saying that we were an excellent in something. And so it made me think about all the things that we're doing, you know, and so we do a lot of social media things, right? But it makes me think about how having banners, you know, and just kind of also advertising all the wonderful things that our students are doing, you know, and it's kind of cool if we drive around the island and people going into, you know, have those kind of messaging out there, like what we want. And so when you think about it, it's pretty amazing. And again, how do we let people know, because it matters to some people. And they came here because they thought, ooh, what has this school excellent in? And it, we could figure out what, I'm sure it's a lot, but it did make me think about how.
It's like an award of excellence, I mean, that was. I don't know if we get to.
The state used to give those based on SBA scores, they used to give those big green and white banners. You probably see them from like two thousand nine-ish through two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And then if you don't see any, it's because the state's not giving those.
Wonderful, kind of, we're trying to figure out if we're excellent in, like, in everything, of course, but yeah.
I, it's been a busy couple of weeks and I think it's only going to get busier, or we're hitting that slide after Memorial Day weekend. But went to the PTA Council Awards, gosh, two weeks ago. And that was great, really a nice opportunity to see staff and volunteers recognized for their hard work. I attended the Equity Advisory, Superintendent Equity Advisory meeting last week for Maggie Ty. And I think the work that they're doing is great, really looking into having a strategic vision for the district. I'm not exactly sure where it ended, but talking about, but really talking about systematizing the equity work, because right now, a lot of it's being done siloed and really pulling, now that we have the PTA chairs, the council chairs, as well as superintendent equity advisor figuring out a way to bring it all under one umbrella, so everyone knows what's going on and participates. And efforts are not being duplicated, which I think happens all the time. Finally, I was at the inclusionary practices, gosh, what yearly in-person conference today and it's just, it's, it's great to see. I've had the privilege of serving on it since it started four years ago. And just to see where we were and where we are and watching our staff get excited about moving it forward. And then, you know, educating our parent community on what the goals are and what's happening, what it means and what it doesn't mean, which is sometimes just as important. And then really creating, creating systems and structures so that it is part of part of everything, just like our equity is as well, I mean, it's really, right? And so, you know, really, but there's, and just people are excited about the work and really brainstorming the, as, I mean, there's always going to be issues, but really, really digging deep and looking at how can we improve our services for kids, for students, for this work.
Thank you, yeah, and I was, I'll echo their sentiment around the Island Park visit, the music was lovely. The music program, haven't seen it like that before, so that was, that was great to see. And how excited the kids were, the coaching, the councilors, that session we had was, was very informative as well, to see how, how well or strong it is to have an embedded coach and an embedded counselor in each school. Makes a, makes a lot of difference. And how it replaces the associate principal in some ways as an added benefit towards developing developing teachers, not just evaluating teachers, so that was very enlightening. Also, the session with parents was, was very, very cool. It's always good to hear the parent input. Concerns around empathy, inclusion and academics always, always resonate. So thank you very much for putting that together, thank you to the Island Park staff for doing that. And I think with that, we've concluded, feel like we're taking a vacation early or something. So with that, could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? And a second? Okay, all in favor, students?
Aye.
And directors?
Aye.
We've got one, zero and four, zero to adjourn.